Can else?
Here.
Mr. Donahue is absent. Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Marino?
Here.
Ms. McCready is absent. Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Ms. Amera?
Here.
Okay. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News Courier News and the Star Ledger file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty. Um, now if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, um, forgive me because I can't stand. But let me just get my flag up here. All right. I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Uh, we do not have any presentations, so we will go right to open session. If anyone from the public would like to speak, um, please give your name and address, um, limit your comments to three minutes. And, um, if you can either on the participant's screen, put your hand up so it shows on your, uh, little box or go like this if you can't figure that out. So would anyone from the public like to be heard at this time? And this is the only public session at this meeting. So it's now or never. Oh, I see, um, Councilman Donahue is here. Anyone wish to speak?
Uh, Mary Jane, this is me. Uh, is this the time that I would bring up the, uh, Burnsville train station for the downtown Burnsville event on November twentieth?
Um, you're actually on the agenda.
Okay.
Or, uh, later in the meeting, I think. Do you have, um, a copy of the agenda? I think it's down under, um. When we get.
New businessman. Six J.
Six J. Yes. So what we, yeah. So hang on till then and, uh, we'll talk about it then. Anybody else? Oh, Gina is here. Okay. All right, moving on to our ordinances, uh, we have the introduction of an ordinance, um. Who's, who's available here? Matt, would you like to introduce that ordinance?
First one?
Sure. All right, let's see. Okay, um. So I move that ordinance, two thousand and twenty-one dash nineteen hundred, concerning affordable housing development fees and amending Article thirteen in the land development regulations, chapter of the borough code entitled, quote, affordable housing, end quote, be introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law, and at a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M. on Monday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, and Jack, just for anyone's information, it's really just cleaning up the language because it was confusing on what the fees are that we charge?
Yes, in two thousand and six, we adopted an ordinance to track the COA language. And it said that development fees, uh, were to be imposed when you put an addition on your house, uh, when it undergoes, when the structure is expanded or undergoes a change to a more intense use. In two thousand and eighteen, our law consultants gave us about eighty pages of affordable housing ordinances. And they made a change to that and they put, based on the increase of the property due to an additional dwelling unit, which really doesn't make any sense in that context. So yes, it's cleaning it up and reverting back to the two thousand and six language that was approved by COA.
Ah, okay. Um, so we just need a voice vote on this.
I have a question. Can I, I have a question about the, uh, about the language, um. Is there a definition? I didn't see that in the, in the ordinance. I did not see an operational definition for what intense use means. Because the way I read this, if anybody does any remodeling to their house, uh, which increases the value of the assessed value, they're going to get a fee.
Yeah, that, that, that's not the intent or the application, uh.
That's the way it reads.
Well, but it's got to be written in the context of the COA rules. And the idea is if you go from a, a single family to a two-family, for instance, that, that's what they mean by more intense use under the municipal land use law. It's, it's not just you've made an improvement.
I, I, I think, and I understand the need to update the ordinance, uh, and I, and I, and I know the background to this and I, I certainly want to make it easier for the, for homeowners. Uh, but I find this as, as confusing as the old, old language is, um. I don't, shouldn't we not have some sort of definitions in here of what the intent is? Because right now, if you look at this, you know, five, ten, fifteen years from now, when none of us are on the council, um. This looks like anytime somebody remodels their home and the value of the home goes up, they get a fee.
But, but I think more intense use has an accepted meaning under the municipal land use law. And, and as I said, I think it has to be read in the context of the COA rules. The, the other thing is the statute requires that there be COA approval of a development fee ordinance, which we have for this. And as I say, it tracks the COA rule word for word, uh.
So I don't see anything references to the, to the land use law in here.
Well, it's a, it's a land use ordinance. So all, all land use ordinances have to be read in the context of the municipal land use law.
I, I'm still concerned, but okay, I understand.
Uh, any other questions? Anybody else have questions on this? Okay, um, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, um, we will have a public hearing on November twenty-second on that. Um, the next ordinance, two thousand and twenty-one, nineteen oh one, um. John, can you introduce that? Or do you have it up in front of you?
I do. Uh, I moved the ordinance, two thousand and twenty-one dash nineteen oh one, supplementing and amending Article twelve of the Borough Land Use Ordinance entitled zoning to create a new R three A residence overlay district. Be introduced by title, published first reading, published according to law, and at the public hearing be scheduled for a meeting in November seven P M. on Monday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay.
Can we have it, uh, a description of this one as well? I know that these two are related, but I'll be honest, it is confusing.
Actually, they're not really.
Yeah, no, they're not really.
Okay. I assume that they were, so I clearly don't understand.
This is several parishioners of Saint John on the Mountain that lead acting on behalf of the church would like to purchase the property of two oh seven North Finley, which is across the street, Michael Post Senior Site, uh, to make it a income restricted two-family. Uh, it's been a two-family for fifty years, but it's one of those that's probably an illegal two-family at the present time, uh, because it doesn't go all the way back to nineteen fifty-nine. So in order to allow them to purchase it and make it illegal to family with affordable housing restrictions, we're doing an overlays on similar to what we did, uh, which, what we've done on some other properties. Uh, this will add two more units to our total of affordable housing units that were provided. So it'll be a credit to any future affordable housing obligations. It's really a good deal for the borough and it's a very generous gesture on behalf of the parishioners of Saint John.
Yeah, this was, um, really, uh, they reached out to us and I just, you know, was, they've been looking for ways to really get involved in the community and this was just, you know, a really incredible outreach that they're doing. So thank you. I think, um, I see Rosina Dixon is, is here. So thank you for, uh, putting in the effort to make this happen.
Do we know, did this particular residence, did they have to go to the planning board to get an existing use variance for the, what, nineteen seventy-one, um, distinction?
I, I don't think they ever went to the board of adjustment, uh. But like I said, it, it has been a two-family. It's, you know, it's, it's a defective two-family now. So only minor changes are needed to, to make it illegal affordably in it.
Okay, any other questions on this?
And, and by the way, if I could just add, if anyone else had purchased it, it would have only been in one family. Uh, we would have closed down the two-family use because it's an illegal use.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, we are good on those. Uh, moving on to resolutions, we have twenty-one, two thirty-three to twenty-one, two forty-four. Um, any questions or discussion on any of the items?
Yeah, can we pull out, um, thirty-five and thirty-nine?
Thirty-five and thirty-nine. Okay, um. You have questions on those, Chad, or you wanna?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I didn't know if you wanted to pull, uh, have everybody respond with, wanted to pull out first.
Well, I mean, let's talk about them and if we can resolve it, we'll pull it off.
So, um, I, I'm just, so I know that there's, there's been a subcommittee working on the quiet zones. Um, it was my understanding that the transition to the quiet zone was a relatively expensive endeavor and probably wasn't plausible. Um, so I'm just, I guess I'm curious to see that we're, we're pulling out money to, to pursue it further. So I guess I'm just looking for some background.
Yeah, so I can try, um, and then maybe Tom, you can add. Um, so Chad, what, what we, we appropriated like seventy-four, seventy-six hundred something a few meetings ago? Um, and it was coming out of the, um, normal fund that Doug has. And so what was suggested at the last Public Works meeting was that we don't pull it out of his everyday fund, if you will. And we, and we pull it more out of a projects and capital fund. And so, and they wanted to, um, you know, make it a more round number, if you will. And there's, they're expecting kind of little bits and pieces here and there to, um, potentially be needed in addition. So without having to come back for every little change and request, we thought ten thousand was a reasonable number, um, to, um, to pull out and put it aside from a capital project fund perspective. And it would also allow for better tracking from a financial perspective to have it all in one project, if you will. So.
But this closes out that, that other appropriation. And Tom, I'm assuming that as we're getting into November, the budget allows for it?
Yes, so, uh, to Gina stated it, uh, correctly that, um, if we keep pulling, uh, thi- this qualifies as cap for capital, uh, to use out of capital. Uh, so if we keep, uh, hitting Doug's operating budget, he's not going to have funds for things that don't qualify for capital.
And I think what we were down to was two crossings is what we're looking at.
Yes, Meeker and White Knack at the moment. That's what this, um, that's what the current Van Cleef engineering is. Yeah. So what, what they're doing with this funding is doing the consultation from an engineering perspective to see what we would have to do to the roads to get the risk level down to the right amount in order for a quiet zone to be acceptable. And so we may not be able to get it down to any decent amount, but at least what this will do is document it and have everything in writing because now it's kind of like, oh yeah, people have asked for that many times and we don't really understand why or how much. Everybody just says it'll be still expensive. So at least now we'll have it documented and we'll know fully. And then we can answer any new resident that comes in asking about this.
All right.
Maybe we have a decent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think your, your question sort of implied that it was a done deal that we're not going to do it. But I think, uh, I agree with, uh, with, uh, Councilmember McCready, that the whole idea of this is to, um, let us know what the art of the possible is. You know, what exactly could be done, what needs to be done if we were to pursue it, what it would cost. And that way we can definitively decide yes or no, and either pursue it or put it to rest.
Okay, yeah, I'm good. So Mary Jane, the, the other question was on twenty-three, uh, two thirty-nine. Um, so I, I know. Yeah, I know why the pickleball court ordinance is in front of us. Have we received an official, um, statement from the county? On county funds?
No, not. Go ahead.
Not, no, we have not yet. Um, this, this is, uh, what this resolution does is it acknowledges the, uh, there were two options that, uh, the committee was looking at, and this one kind of changes the orientation of the courts.
Yeah.
So once council approves that, we're going to send the county, uh, a revised, uh, drawing to say this is what we're doing now. Uh, it basically deals with the sun and angles of the sun and things like that.
So, but this does not appropriate the funds then?
No, sir.
No, we're just approving, yeah, at the second one plan had it turned one way, plan two had it kind of sideways, which I think was better, um, and, and who was it? It's just reviewed by the, um,
Public Works.
Public Works Committee?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm also good.
All right, uh, anybody else have questions on any of the resolutions?
No, I do not. Chad, this is, just so you know, the pickleball stuff, that'll go out to R F P.
Yep.
And that's actually. Has to go, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
And just for the public, uh, to, to know, I mean, the, the difference between options one and two, one was a north-south orientation, the other was east-west orientation. And then, um, we, we thought the east-west would, would not be good where players have the sun in their eyes.
Okay, um. Can I have a motion to move the resolutions?
Well, let's see. I can if I go reverse your marriage. Give me one second.
I'll move to a dog resolution, twenty-one, two thirty-three to twenty-one, two forty-four.
I'll second.
There you go.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. Amera?
Yes.
All right, uh, my update. Um, October twenty-sixth, Tom Leslie and I attended a webinar on the Somerset County Improvement Authority. Uh, was more of a, of an update on what they offer, which is alternative funding for capital projects. It's more geared towards municipalities that don't have a triple A rating, which we do. So I'm not sure if we will avail ourselves of it, but it's, it was good information to know. Uh, also on the twenty-sixth, the county had a vaccination clinic here from two to six at the train station. They had somewhere around two hundred and thirty-eight people come through the clinic. Um, I got my booster there. And the next one will be on November sixteenth from two to six. Um, also on the twenty-sixth, Leah Horowitz, Olivia Manning, and I met with Bill Youngblood, who's a former councilman and he's a Realtor and he also has a company called, um, Welcome to Our Neighborhood, which is similar to what used to be the Welcome Wagon kind of organization, which no longer is, I mean, the Welcome Wagon now just mails something to people that's a little booklet with not much in it. And what he does is put together a folder that they deliver to the door of new residents. So we talked about, um, how we can, he asked to have a letter from the mayor and how we could have information from downtown Burnsville or Recreation. And, you know, the police department, helpful things that a new resident might need. So we were excited about that. Uh, we'll be, um, working with him on getting our Burnsville packet together. Um, I forget how many towns he does, but just quite a few. On the twenty-seventh, um, I attended the Somerset County Human Services Commission Monthly Meeting, which, um, had a presentation by the Poverty Research Institute, which was really interesting. Um, they talked about the different ways that poverty is calculated. Um, there was the federal, um, poverty level, the supplemental poverty level and the true poverty level. Um, and according to the true poverty, and actually it's interesting to go to the Poverty Research Institute's website um, and look at what the poverty level is in different counties. In Somerset County, a three-member family, which would be an adult with two children, needs to earn ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to meet basic needs. That's just on the line, um, which is pretty high, I thought. Uh, we had a meeting of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign Committee on the twenty-seventh, um, which one of the projects we're doing, we're sponsoring a mental health awareness training tomorrow for the Borough Department Heads and committee members from the Campaign Committee. And Community in Crisis is doing the training. It's, was two hours of at-home work and then four and a half hours of in-person. So it's very thorough and, I, you know, I think it's terrific that um, Tom kind of led the, uh, charge here to have our department heads trained. Uh, we also discussed the stigma-free initiative that the county has undertaken, um, talked about doing our the fall health fair in combination with the five K and getting our coaches involved so that we get a better participation. On the twenty-eighth, I attended a webinar by RideWise on implementing the E V model ordinance. And it really gave a lot more information on how to use that ordinance to get our town moving on our E Vs, um, charging stations. The county call, uh, last week was they announced eighty-four percent of Somerset County residents aged twelve and over have been vaccinated, which is really a good number, uh, compared to other counties in the state. Uh, we had the, on the thirtieth, the costume contest and downtown trick-or-treating, that recreation in downtown Burnsville did an outstanding job. Um, if you had a chance to stop into the train station, it was amazing how it was decorated and the, uh, action figures moving and it was just, it was terrific. The kids loved it, um. It, it was better attended than we expected. Uh, then the first, I had my foot surgery, so not much went on this past week. Uh, I did attend on the sixth Saturday night, there was a candlelight vigil for Max Gray, who was a two thousand and twenty B H S graduate and currently a student at Rowan. Uh, it was, it was really a, a lovely tribute. They had, um, balloons they let go and lanterns and, uh, did prayers in Spanish and English. And it was just really, um, there were hundreds of people that came out to support the family. So, um, I was glad that we were able to provide the, uh, turf field for them to have that. And thank you to, uh, Leah again for making the arrangements. And that's my report. Um, Tom, you're up next.
Um. So just to make council aware that we've received, uh, four R F P responses, uh, for each of the, uh, recreation-related ones we issued. So we have, we received four for the trails engineer and four for the general parks and rec engineer. Uh, those were due this past Thursday, so we're in a process of, uh, going through them. Uh, we are fully in budget meetings with department heads and, uh, working on their narratives with them. They're doing a great job. Just a reminder that the office is going to be closed this Thursday in commemoration of, uh, Veterans Day. And then I'd like to, uh, just thank Anthony and Cindy and Christine, uh, and all those who were involved in this, uh, past week's, uh, general election, uh, administration in town. I think everything went off pretty well. So, uh, and, and it's a long day for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then there is the one, we do have, have a quick, uh, items, uh, for executive.
All right. Um, moving on to holidays. We did have, um, Anthony, I know you said we have the, um, the hold harmless, the insurance, uh, but we didn't get any details on.
What I spoke with, you know, I spoke with Joe, uh, this afternoon, actually, uh, uh, Joe Rossi, and he said that depending on when they get the Christmas tree delivery, the actual tree lighting will either be the first or second Saturday in December. So that's either, either the fourth or the eleventh, depending on when the tree comes in. And I believe it starts at four o'clock is when the activities, uh, begin. So, um,
So that we do.
Wanted to mention that.
The usual, um, kind of things with the reading at the library and the.
Right, exactly, yeah. Uh, the, the usual holidays, uh, activities, yeah.
Uh, Mayor, can we put in writing this year when the Christmas tree needs, or the holiday trees be done?
Um, I don't know. Can we do that, Tom?
Because I remember, I remember last year didn't come down until March.
I know, I know.
And the year before that, and the year before that.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I, I'd like to put it in writing that it's down by like no later than like the third week of January, if that's.
Yeah, I think we can certainly, uh, have the permission hinge on that, can't we? Jack, can we say, yes, we approve the activities with this condition?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So the, the whole harmless agreement only goes through January sixteenth. So at that point, tree should be done down.
Okay, that's good. It's a good thing to base it off of. I like that. All right, um, Chad, the finance committee, you want to go over what we discussed?
I can. And, and actually, Anthony, could you pull up the slides for the public?
Sure, I can do that. Give me a minute to get that squared away.
Yeah, why don't you give a little background on it, Chad?
Yeah. So a- as everyone's aware, um, in August, uh, Branstad did present the master recreation plan to council, um, and was universally adopted. The, the next step is obviously a lot of planning. Um, there's a financial component to it. Then there's a huge execution component, component to making sure that this plan not only happens, but also importantly, doesn't take, uh, the next twenty years to become reality.
Yeah.
So i- in our last finance committee, and actually we discussed this, we started this in motion at council, and I believe our last meeting, if nothing being prior, we discussed a, a procedure and process to make sure that number one, we're moving with the right amount of speed. And number two, that we don't run into appro- appropriation problems as we go along. So if you go up to the second slide where you are there, um, Anthony, you know, the goal here is to improve the general facilities and amenities in this town to enhance the lives of all of our residents, young and old. Um, but importantly, without creating any new taxes or creating any long-term liability commitments that are outside of our, our sort of perceived fu- funding mechanism. And that's where this plan comes from. Next slide. So the steps we've taken, just to remind the public, um, over the course of the year, uh, we've clearly identified the need through a variety of surveys and efforts, the Rand Center Committee that were presented in August, and I don't even go back through those. Uh, but importantly, you know, we've, we've clearly heard from the community what everyone wants, and, and now we are in the execution phase. Um, also during a similar time through public referendum, we created the flexibility in the existing open space fund to finance our improvements, both near and long term. So lastly, creation of a comprehensive master plan that involved one-year public opinion and, and thought creation is sort of the, the terminal event that we had in August, which was presented. So now as a council, we feel it's our time to act judici- judiciously, uh, but act we must, we must do, um, within some reasonable timeframe. Towards the end of August, I believe it was the first meeting in September, um, the Recreation Committee, as presented by Bob, presented high priority items that they believe were core elements of the master plan, which required funding in the near term, which was three to five years. Um, and below, you can just see some general appropriations in regards to those numbers. Now, it's important for the public and everyone to realize these are estimates. Um, and all of these items will go through the normal R F P process, um, the budgeting process to make sure that we have the most appropriate, most cost-effective structures. Uh, but these are merely, um, estimates as we proceed forward. Um, next slide. So if we quickly look at the potential financial impact over the next five years to, to fund all of the items, which the Recreation Committee believes are, are high priority, it's a possible cumulative spend that's between the two and a half to three million dollar range. Uh, but just to look at our existing funds, we have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars current open, open space funds that can be applied to these improvements. And we have purely available funds that are four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which equate to approximately two point two million over the next five years. So if you just do some simple math at the back, simple back of the napkin math, you can see that the numbers line up here. At about a five-year plan, we can believe, we believe we can get all these improvements done in a judicious way without creating again any new taxes or creating any long-term debt. So the last step is how do we do this from appropriation perspective? Well, the first one, um, happened, I believe, was it two weeks ago, Tom, or was it the meeting before? I forget.
That was two weeks.
Two weeks ago. So we, um, and I should put the ordinance number in here now because we now have one. We appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the open space fund to begin the planning process. Um, Tom was already mentioning in his report that we're hiring, um, engineering for both the Polo Grounds, the Polo Fields, um, and the pool. Um, and we have some quick hit items, including the soak, Rose Bowl safe to repair, light upgrades at the basketball courts, um, maintenance, as I'm sorry, the service replacing the fen- fencing, um, quick hit to some ADA elements and the pool, uh, that can already be moved forward. And the last piece of this is what I'm calling sort of our home equity loan. And I think that's the best way for the public to understand this. And I think that's the best way for the public to understand this. It's a home equity advance, a bond that will advance the money that we need over the next five years. So that way funding doesn't get in the way of success. Tom is going to introduce this at the next meeting. I know that you and I talked about it possibly being this one, but I'm guessing since it didn't scan the agenda, it'll be next.
Yes, I have some. I have, there's a couple little quirks that we have to work out with respect to some grants and how moving forward with a grant might interact with that. And okay, the abundance of caution, I've been seeking some clarification before I move forward with asking councils to vote on a bond.
That's fine. So just know, I guess council that a bond is coming. And Tom is working through, obviously, we want to make sure that we maximize whatever matching dollars we can get from the county or dollars from the county in this. That he's working through that problem. But there will be a bond that's presented to council within the next two, I'm going to give Tom four weeks to make sure that we, we sort of pre-fund these activities so that way we're moving forward. So last slide, and then I'll be done and we can answer any questions. So similar to the road, road bomb, but the difference is it wasn't through referendum. All projects requiring RFP will come to council to approve. Both the RFP of the spend and also the amount. And if for those of us that were on council, remember how that worked, you know, we wanted to do Road X. Road X was bid, was bid, it was then decided to use this, this bond for this purpose. So why are we doing this now? And that's really the big question. It allows us to get started. It allows us to show that our shovels are on the ground and we're ready to go. And we funded these projects so we can maximize our county funding. Earmarks project for the project globally and provides direction to the borough staff. This is a high priority project. It allows us, the initial required engineering and planning to specify and become more specific with our funding mechanisms. And it allows us to submit shovel ready grants for funding from the state. We want to make sure we maximize that opportunity wherever we can. So with that, I'll pause. If there's any questions from council, we can take them or we can move to the next meeting where Tom will introduce the bond.
So Chad, just to kind of summarize, what you're saying is, I mean, what we came up with is that you get the bond, so we, but each year we pay it off with that money from the open space fund.
Yes.
Distinct tax. So therefore there's no new tax for residents at all. We're using
That's correct.
The current tax to pay off the bond. So I think that's, you know, a very efficient, sensible way to do that. The other thing, I think in having those engineering studies done puts us in a good position for grants. Because I think what we found is if we don't have, you know, all the engineering, we can't submit. So I think it's great that we've started that process with those RFPs out for the consultants. So yeah, I think this is a really good solution.
And we take advantage, Mayor, and we take advantage of some pretty good financing today.
Yeah, that's a good point. Anyone else have comments, questions? Like it, don't like it?
I would like to say that I do like it. I think it's a very well thought out and strategic plan in terms of why, we're covering the why and the how, which is great. The other, the only other question I have is in the past, we've talked about there are certain teams and club sports that are private. And will there be any type of partnerships with those organizations? Because it's clear that some of these things are going to affect them, obviously, especially in the active recreation column. So anything that's a facility that's going to be used by private clubs, are we? I, I just want to make sure that we're not leaving anyone out because it had, in the past, you know, there were things that were done on the field that one specific sports team felt like they were not consulted, I guess. And I know the rec, the rec committee now is a lot more diversified in terms of having sports for women and boys. And even nowadays we have sports for adults, which I think is great. And I just want to make sure that as we go further along in this plan, that we're getting the word out with people and anyone involved in the team sports, so they can give their, their feedback.
I think that's a really good point, Christine. And you know, I, I know the, you're like you said, the rec committee has become diversified. And I think that's a really important thing. So you know, I mean, Bob, I mean, not Bob, Tom, I think we can charge Bob with Christine's recommendation to make sure that we are thoroughly getting the opinions that we need before, before next.
Yes. And, and as you spelled out, Councilman, every award from the engineer to the actual RFP is going to have to be handled by council. So I'll be mindful, I think we'll all be mindful that, that type of info is important. And also I'll just say that we are certainly building on a great, great foundation at council as a whole laid in terms of getting extensive feedback on what, on the actual master plan. So we are being guided by those priorities and we'll, we'll continue to pull that onion skin back as we go along on specific projects.
I, I, I just want to question the chart that we're not seeing it right now, but I think it was presented by Bob Markowitz at a previous meeting. The timelines on that probably need to be adjusted in terms of managing expectations for the public. For example, the quick, quick hit column is listed as 2021. And I doubt we'll be able to get much done in 2021 since that year's almost over. So I, I, I think if we're going to present that chart again in the future, when we, when we vote on it, we ought to update the timelines.
Yeah, I think you're a hundred percent correct. And I think realistically, we're working on a three to a five, six year timeline for these primary items. So I think that, that reality is important to set the right expectation.
Okay.
I'm really happy with it. It's a great, well thought out plan. And I really like the fact that we're kind of borrowing from ourselves so that we can get things moving. Another walking path and stuff took some time and that's getting closer. But the faster that we can get some improvements done, I think the, the better off we're going to be as a, as a borough. So thanks for the thoughtfulness from the finance committee.
Great. Okay, reorganization council meeting schedule. Anybody have any conflicts or problems with that? I noticed there was only one Tuesday, right, that we had? Did I get that right?
I'm good. Baseball doesn't start until March.
Actually, there were two Tuesdays. There was one for Columbus Day Monday and one for Christmas.
Oh, yeah.
On the 26th, because it's Christmas and it's Sunday, we're up on that Monday.
Yeah, that's what I figured with the.
Everything else is pretty much the usual second and fourth Monday with, with one meeting in July and August and the second Monday with reorganization on January 3rd.
Third, okay.
I'll have a resolution for the next council meeting if that's what council wants to go with.
All right, looks good. And it's always, you know, as we go along, we can always change them as long as we give enough notice.
Yeah, Mary Jane, I know you brought this up. Can we get the list of open or?
Yes, I, I already asked Anthony for that, yep.
Yes, I'll be getting that out to everyone shortly, yes.
Yeah, so we can start working on appointments for January.
I, I think because of our own fault, we were late. We felt rushed last year, so I want to get in front of that.
Yeah, good idea. I did ask for that. And yeah, Anthony's going to get to it when he finishes the election stuff, probably, right?
Yeah, I'll definitely, I'll try to get that out in coming days.
Good, thank you. Um, best practices, and I know I had a question on this, I'm sure everybody else did. But you know, I should remember this from year to year, but we do this every year. It's a kind of a self survey of different things that the state considers best practices. You need to get a score of 15 on this survey in order to get all your state aid. And we had a score of 20.5.
Yes.
Yeah, so we are well over the limit here on what, what we have to do. So.
Out of what's the maximum, Mary Jane?
Uh, you know, I don't know what the maximum is because there's some things that don't apply. So no matter what we did, we'd never get points for them.
Right.
You know, so you can't really say what the maximum would be.
Okay. So be a good question, maybe a good question is how, what was our score last year? Or did we improve on last year?
It, it was 19 last year, so it was 20 and a half for this year, so.
So we're doing better.
That's good.
And, and as usual, Anthony has the answer at his fingertips. That's great.
I, I just want to note that each of these items on the best practices chart requires extensive documentation when we submit it with the state. And that's what Leslie handles that and she won't put anything on paper as far as the score goes without being sure she could document it.
So not, not just checking boxes, right?
So I just want to commend her and Tina for making sure that we're in good shape there.
That's great. Thank you. What's next? Somerset County Health Department is asking for use of the train station building for, I guess that's the next one they're doing on the 16th. Because the weather's getting bad, they wanted to know if they could use the building. Last time they came with a little trailer, but I don't think they always have that available to them. And this would be in and out, so people would not be lingering there. Are we okay with that? Anyone have a problem with that?
On a Tuesday, 15th, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, as long as I think, you know, there's, we still don't have a tenant, so we might as well let people use it while they can. Okay, so we can tell them yes on that?
Yep.
The next one, finally, here we are at 6J. Downtown Burnsville has asked to use the train station at the.
Were you, were you going to allow for questions on the best practices? You, you said you had some questions and I, I did as well. Are we allowed to ask questions for Tom?
I'm not sure he can answer them all, but.
I may have to get back to you, but.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to raise, what, what caught my eye was a couple of things. One is item number 12 and number 20, which are both related to cybersecurity and IT. And we answered no to those in terms of, do we do cyber training of our employees? So that they don't, you know, we minimize the risk of hacking. And the other one was, how often do we do backup? So those seem, seemed like things that might be easy to remedy and would be good for the borough as well in terms of a safety aspect.
Yeah, so on, on the training, the question was, are all municipal employees receiving ongoing cybersecurity training? We didn't feel that we met the definition of ongoing, but we, but they get training as we perceive the need for it. But it's not something we can document like, okay, every six months, you know, we give you this training. So and the, the bottom line is employees have had training. And we continue to give them training. It just, we didn't feel 100% confidence saying ongoing.
I, I suspect every year or every other year is ongoing, but you, you might've been too hard on yourself.
Maybe. But, but we have been, I have been speaking with someone who can do this type, type of training. And so outside of this, it's a concern of mine. You know, I come from a college and we had some really sensitive student information. I know what, the extent to which we did training, I'd like to bring that here as well.
The second part of that, item number 20 was about backing up information. It was pretty strict. I think it asked for daily backup, but I'm, I'm curious whether we're doing something at least frequently enough, even if we don't meet that standard.
We do, we do.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the award ceremony. If you remember, downtown Burnsville had a 5K. Right around shortly after Hurricane Ida, so they were over at the high school in the front. And the medals hadn't come in in time to award them that day. And they were, they were kind of in a hurry anyway to get people back home because of the shelter in operation there. So what they're asking is to make a, a, a small awards ceremony during the farmer's market so that people can come to the farmer's market, pick up their medal and, you know, go inside, get the medal. Maybe have a cup of coffee and some cookies and keep going. Are we okay with that? I don't know if you want to add anything, Olivia or Amy?
Yeah, I'll just add to that really briefly. Thank you, Mary Jane. Yeah, we, we didn't receive the medals in, in time and we really want to thank everyone and encourage them to come again next year. And they also left behind several of their swag bags, so we want the opportunity to give them that and draw more people to the town while we still have good weather. And I'll very briefly mention that at downtown Burnsville, a few upcoming events. So the 20th would be the award ceremony. November 27th is Small Business Saturday, where we will have a table and gift wrapping available babysitting in partnership with the rec department. December 1st, our holiday lights competition begins officially for the town, businesses and residents. And December 4th, we're planning the holiday parade, Saturday, December 4th. And just as an FYI, for those of you who don't, who don't know me, I was, I'm on the promotions committee of downtown Burnsville and recently elected president of the board, Leah Horowitz, with the rec department was recently elected vice president. As an FYI.
Thank you, Amy. Just a question on Small Business Saturday, where are you going to have the table?
I think in Ockett Square, Olivia.
No, we, we had talked about Small Business Saturday. I don't remember what the date is. It was earlier this year, perhaps maybe August. Fenwick Park was, was where it talked about, yeah. Where the Milton Fenwick statue is, just having a tent. We, it would same, which is what we did a couple of years ago.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. Worst case scenario, I mean, worst case scenario, if the weather's really bad, then you know, maybe we can talk about a backup plan. But that hopefully with a tent, we should be fine. It was freezing two years ago, so I think we'll be okay.
I remember that, yes, it was. Okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right, everybody okay with the train station for the medals? All right, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I don't think we had any correspondence, did we, Anthony? No.
I know it.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Something we've forgotten to talk about? Or any new business?
Did we get any response for the DMV, the mobile DMV yet?
No, I did write to them. I didn't get a, I did not get a response, but I'll follow up. Thank you.
MVC.
Oh, sorry.
Right, there's a huge difference between them.
Yes.
And the other thing I wanted to remind people about is this Thursday is Veterans Day. And this Sunday, the rec department is sponsoring the event for this veteran step up. So that's the rec department. It's a pre-event, I believe. You can donate if you want to. But mainly to, you know, raise the, raise the awareness and the reason why we celebrate Veterans Day. And I think it's a great, great, it's going to be a great event. And they, I know that the rec department is, did a great job planning that, so.
Yeah.
If you can go, please do.
Was it nine o'clock on Sunday? Is that what it is? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? New business?
I just said for new business, I'll just now make an announcement, but again, I've been working with Rabbi Shemtav of the Kabad in, in Baskin Millington, actually, and, and Brenda Kernan at Burnsville Center and we'll erect the menorah there again this year.
Yeah. It's early this year, isn't it?
Yeah, it comes right, it's a Sunday after Thanksgiving. So it's sort of a Thanksgiving and Hanukkah blended together.
Yeah, I know. Okay, well, yeah, let us know when the lighting is.
It'll be that Sunday. I'm not sure of the time yet. Five or six o'clock, somewhere in that range, but yeah, I'll make sure that there's an announcement out.
Great, okay. Anybody else? Okay. What do we need a motion for executive? You said we had something for executive?
Yes.
I'll move to go to executive.
I'll second. I'll second.
Contract, contract negotiations.
Yeah. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Thank you publicly for, for attending.